I can look at y'all and not look at those cameras.
Yeah.
Ms. Stickney, it's two o'clock. What you have on your clock, I've got pretty much straight up and down, but I, uh... Are you guys all square? I'm serious, guys. I've been using two different watches in my, uh...I don't know if I'm...if my time is right or not. It's two o'clock?
My phone says two o'clock.
Okay, so it looks like we're about ready to begin.
I was just turning my ringer off, though.
All right, very good. So, Ms. Stickney, when you're ready, if you don't mind, if we could call the roll to make sure we have a quorum.
Mr. Beecham.
Here.
Dr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Hemrick is absent. Ms. Shepherd is absent. And Dr. Tatum.
Here.
Looks like we have a quorum. We're ready to proceed. So, Ms. Stickney, if you will, help us move to item number two, which is the Statement of the Compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
This regularly scheduled meeting of the statewide virtual charter school board has been convened in accordance with the Oklahoma Meeting Act. This meeting was preceded by advance notice of the date, time, and place filed with the Oklahoma Secretary of State on July 15th of 2020. Notice of this meeting was also given at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting by posting notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of the meeting by 2:00 PM on April 5th, 2021, on the statewide virtual charter school board website and at the principal office of the statewide virtual charter school board located at 840 Research Parkway, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Thank you so much. Colleagues and friends, if you'll join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. Its symbols of peace unite all people.
If you guys would just honor us just a moment, or for a moment of silence. Thank you. Item number five is an opening comment from your chair, and just as a point of personal privilege, I'd just like to say just a couple of remarks for friends and colleagues and folks that are listening across the state, as well as to our folks in the audience. I appreciate the team for organizing so, so well, the distancing, and I appreciate you all for honoring and respecting the masks. We appreciate that. That's very helpful. Interestingly enough, I want to make sure that folks know that we have been very methodical and very purposeful and trying very hard to get to this agenda today that you can see is very weighty. The snowstorm that came several weeks ago did certainly cause a delay in personal and professional schedules, as well as the confines of even meeting in this room, and so we've, we've had to stack things up. And I know that causes people to, to perhaps get impatient or to be frustrated with the fact that there are very, very serious matters and practical things that we need to get to. But with that said, you, you understand the context. With that, again, just as a point of personal privilege, my, my stepfather, in that scenario, when the ice storm did slip and fall, had a really nasty head injury. We didn't realize how bad it was until just this past week. As a result of that, he has been the primary caretaker for my mother, who is suffering with Alzheimer's. And, and so what that's caused is, he ended up having to have brain surgery just about six days ago, five days ago, and we've had these, these TIA moments, including some as late as yesterday. But we finally got him home last night at about 9:00 o'clock. So, I spent the night last night. So, if my socks don't match and my belt doesn't match, it's because I'm living out of the back of my car. And so with that said, I just ask for just a little bit of grace, but I also ask you to, to realize that today's agenda, we do need to plow and we will need to be methodical. We'll try to get through it as best we can because I do need to get back home tonight to be with my family. A little extra support. But all that to say, as I was leaving, he asked where I was going. My mom asked where I was going, and I told him where I was, and he said, "Go do right by kids and families." So, for what it's worth, that is the North Star. This is not an entrepreneurial adventure. This is not about lawyers, as much as I have respect for all. This is about trying to get to a place with families, teachers, and students. And I will say this last piece, it's so critical that we do this righteously for those students because that moment, just before we were about ready to get him out of the hospital, I walked out of his room as they were getting ready to do another x-ray, and a former student said, "Dr. Franklin, do you remember me?" And God bless her, she had on a hat and glasses and a mask. And so all I saw were two eyes looking at me. And I said, "You're gonna have to give me some help." And so she reminded me who she was, and she just said, "Thank you for trying to advance and trying to help me." And so she said, "You know, I'm an x-ray technician." I said, "Well, that one in there, please take really good care of." So, I say all that to say, the work that we're doing today with the young people that we're doing today is about workforce readiness. And as we do it righteously and we do it with fidelity, this is how we will go about taking care of people, whether they're welders, x-ray technicians, or whether they happen to be people who prepare our meals. So, this work is really righteous and really thoughtful, and we want to get after it. So, thank you for indulging me on those, on those pieces of the puzzle. Now, we do have one colleague who has signed for public comment, so Bill Hickman, if you will. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. We do need to approve the minutes, so we'll, we'll start with that. We'll start with that. Is there a motion for approving the minutes from previous meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Call for a vote.
Dr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hemrick's absent. Ms. Shepherd's absent. Dr. Tatum.
Yes.
And Mr. Beecham.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for the hint. I appreciate that. So, Mr. Hickman, Counselor Hickman, we'll, we'll honor you to, to have an opportunity to speak to us, and again, we will have no action on, on your comments other than we want to hear what you say that's relevant to the agenda items that we're speaking to today. And we typically honor that with a three-minute timer. So, Ms. Stickney, when you're prepared, we'll, we'll start the timer, and Counselor will let you proceed whenever she gives us the green line.
Mr. Franklin, I want to, Chairman Franklin, I want to first say that you and your family are in our thoughts and prayers, and we very much greatly appreciate not your service and time volunteering to be here, but all of the board members. We know that this is a, a love effort, if you will, of serving on this board, and it is, as it can be demanding, and we do very much appreciate it. And I'm here to speak with you, as you said, on behalf of the thousands of epic families, about what the process that we're going through with the virtual board because the process has left my client and many of our families confused and with a lot of uncertainty about the path forward for our organization. And so I kind of wanted to go back and walk through a little bit. On October 1st, we all know the audit report was published. On October 13th, this board convened. The SAI was allowed to present, and the notice was approved. During that 13-day period, we know now that there were 37 emails exchanged between the virtual board representatives and the state auditor representatives. Very active, very active. On December 17th, we presented a motion for summary judgment on many of the allegations and the entire notice as well to this board. On January 16th, 30 days later, a response was filed. As you mentioned, there were four, have since been four board meetings canceled, February 16th, February 26th, March 9th, and March 18th. I was advised that I would be allowed to present the motion for summary judgment at the March 15th hearing, or at the March 15th meeting, I'm sorry, at the March 18th meeting. I was advised that on March 15th, but that meeting got canceled. On March 18th, there was also a motion to quash submitted by the state auditor inspector's office and their legal counsel at the Assistant Attorney General's office. In email communications between me and that representative, I have been writing in emails where I would be allowed until April 12th to file the written response, and one of the objections in that motion was withdrawn. I bring that up because that's something you may be discussing and considering later, and that's not information that I'm not aware, that the board's legal counsel is aware of, and certainly therefore the board's not aware of. On March 29th, there were two additional motions to quash filed by the virtual board, the virtual board's prosecutor, and by the AG's office. And now here we are, here we are on April 6th, where the three motions to quash are all on your agenda. Eight days ago, they were filed. The motion for summary judgment is on your agenda. 110 days ago, it was filed. I was advised prior to this meeting on the 6th that my motion for summary judgment would be on the agenda, but in reviewing the agenda, it appears to me that it's only on there for an executive session discussion and not for a public presentation, and therefore not going to be transparent to the public. It's my experience that to ensure the full vindication of a client's or an individual or organization's due process rights, that every court, state agency, state board will allow a party to present, virtually everyone will allow a party to present a motion if requested, and we have requested. We're simply seeking a fair and equitable process. The state Department of Education, the state virtual, the state Department of Education and Row State have allowed us to present a response to the state auditors, state auditors' report. Why is this important? Because that audit report, by their own acknowledgement, contains a 36% error rate with regard to the calculation of the administrative fee. If they get a D on calculations of the admin fee, how can this organization, how can this body rely upon that audit report for your termination proceeding, which is what you are doing? And you have not allowed us to make a presentation at all to respond to the allegations in that audit report, but you proceeded with the notice of terminate when, like I said, Row State and the SDE have allowed us to present to them. You've allowed the SAI to present to you, and many of you, at least two, I believe, were individually and personally interviewed by them, and you're now our judge and jury. And you've had the chance to have one-on-one conversations with them about many of these allegations, and we've not had a chance to present anything to you in response. I would just say on behalf of the thousands of families, staff, and teachers for Epic Charter Schools and Epic One-on-One, to give us an opportunity to present our motion for summary judgment in a public forum, give us a chance to present a response to the state auditors' report in a public forum, so there can be transparency, and the organizations can move forward together. That's what we hear from our families and staff. They want us to work together. You're our sponsor. We want to work with you, and we stand ready to do that, and we have our hand out waiting for you to reach back. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The next item is 7A, a presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding consent agreement with Community Action, Inc., Governing Board for Epic One-to-One Charter. Dr. Wilkinson, do we have a, an item to consider?
No, we do not. Your, your representatives, specifically myself and your counsel, have had discussions with Epic One-on-One Charter School regarding the issues within the state audit that Mr. Hickman just referenced within the notice of intent to terminate. I believe we have made good progress in those discussions, but we do not yet have a, an agreement for you to consider today.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, we'll move then to 7B as we move through this, which is a presentation, discussion, and possible action to enter into executive session pursuant to receive legal advice from the board attorney concerning the following matters: litigation and termination of charter contract with Community Strategies, Inc., Governing Board for Epic One-to-One Charter School. And item number one is considered as a motion for summary judgment and response to the motion for summary judgment and reply. And with that said, legal counsel, I believe that what I would like to do, and respectfully give you an opportunity, Mr. Hickman, we have read the summary judgment. We've actually read it several times over. We've tried to internalize it as best we can. My student colleagues are brighter than I. I only lasted six weeks of law school. So, on the last day I could get half the tuition back, I dropped. So, with that, I feel like I have a pretty good notion of what your, your concerns are and what you have very thoroughly outlined, but I would like to give you 10 minutes, if you will, to speak to anything additionally to that motion that you feel like would be helpful for us to review, if you would like to have that 10 minutes.
I would like to make one objection to that. I don't think it's appropriate. It's not appropriate to allow anything additional that's already been put into the motions to be presented here today because I have not, I would not know what he's planning to present additional than what's already put in the motion and not have a chance to respond to that accordingly.
So, um, here's, yeah, I, I think what I understood you to say was your concern about matters that he may bring in addition to that. What, what I would like to, as Chair, is to also give you an opportunity to speak to 10 minutes, perhaps, in response to those things, but I yield to our own legal counsel to say, is, are we in a, in a lane that's out of, out of bounds here?
Well, I, I, as far as the presenting the motion, I agree that, I mean, giving them time to present their motion. What I understood you to say is that it was in order to, if there's something that needs to be explained further or addressed more, not necessarily present further evidence in...
It's very thorough, and I mean, we've reviewed it pretty clearly, but if there are matters there that, that would add clarity to it, that would be helpful for you to explain, that's what my intent was. I, I don't think it would be helpful to, to go off course. I mean, I don't think it would be helpful for us because I don't think it gives us an opportunity to speak to what you, I think, very astutely wrote into your, your documents would be fair for us to have to begin to review a whole nother series, but from that standpoint, for that moment of clarity, I think would be helpful, so...
Okay, as long as I have a chance to respond.
Absolutely.
Marie, could you identify yourself so people know why, why you would say that and who you are?
Oh, I'm Marie Shubel. I'm operating as, I'm counsel for the board normally, but in this role, I am prosecuting the case against Epic. And so I have responded to the motion for summary judgment that Mr. Hickman has provided, and so my objection was just to make sure that we're not going outside of that motion.
And I think that's very fair and very healthy for the, for the discussion that parameters.
Okay.
Counselor Hickman, if you'd like to have those 10 minutes, we yield to you. And Ms. Stickney, if you don't mind, kind of give him a, just by hand signal, maybe just a little bit of a warning. Counselor Hickman, again, I don't want to be disrespectful to you, but we will limit it to 10 minutes. So, we'll try to give you that...
Yes, sir.
Would you prefer a two-minute warning or a one-minute warning? What would be best?
Two minutes would be great, but I'll probably also set my, my iPhone up here, so...
Okay, so you'll have...
Something that doesn't lock up on me.
Your, your high school speech teacher would appreciate that, so...
Thankfully, I had the contingency plan and brought printouts.
Oh, good.
And to Ms. Shubel's point, I, I, my presentation is just a summation, if you will, of the, the brief. It doesn't have any additional facts or new, it doesn't have any new facts...
Okay.
That were not a part of what was presented, but I, if you don't mind, I'll approach and pass things out, and I'll give one to Ms. Shubel.
Thank you. Oh, that is absolutely. Thank you for the respect. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you. We will have to have one for the official record when all is said and done. That's mostly...
So, Mr. Chairman, what I'll do is I'll just try to walk you guys through, um... Get my, my clock set here. Walk you through kind of page, you know, sort of page one, page two, and it's kind of, we can flip through these together.
Okay.
And I'll just kind of talk to them as if they were on the, on the slide.
Okay, very good.
No problem.
And Ms. Stickney, if you would just give him a two-minute warning when you, by a sign with, with two fingers up, and he's got a timer there as well. Thank you. Counselor, it's all yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, if we'll flip, go ahead and flip to the next slide, slide two. These are the three main topics here. The conflict of interest issue with regard to Mr. Harrington, the administrative resource sharing issue, and then the learning fund issue. Those are three things that are in my motion that I'm going to be talking to you about. So, the next slide is what I'm calling Proposition One, which is that motions are allowed by the SVSE rules and the applicable law, so this board should consider them. The next slide. This is where I'm showing you the actual rule that allows for motions. Rules for district court don't apply to administrative proceedings, and why make a motion for summary judgment? The whole point of a motion for summary judgment, for you guys to consider this motion, is one, it could dismiss the entire proceeding, but two, it could streamline the proceeding so that we don't have to spend time and resources and money defending and preparing for actions or allegations that have no merit, and if they have no merit, then they should be dismissed now. And that's kind of the whole point of this motion, and that's why they're allowed. So, if we'll flip to the next slide, Proposition Two, and Proposition One is just, is really in response to the response brief in opposition, just to kind of put that in context for you. Proposition Two is that the virtual board should equally apply its conflict of interest principles. As this board's aware, you voted to recuse two members already, and we're just asking for those principles to be applied equally. So, if we look to the next slide, you can see that we have a timeline here that shows issues with regard to Mr. Harrington's ethical conflicts. On February 16th to the present, Mr. Harrington has, his company has signed multiple contracts with Dove, and these continue all the way through the end of, the end of his term, which is now, he's now been removed. November 2019, Mr. Harrington votes for Dove, which is also known as OITS with contract, with this board without a public disclosure of his contracts with the Dove entity that is also the same governing board for OITS. On March 2020, Mr. Harrington tells SAI he prayed that he would find a reason to terminate Epic contract. That's in the work papers we have received in his personal interview that I know, Mr. Franklin, and I think, Mr. Bochamp, you've also had with the auditor during that investigative process. Then October 1st, 2020, without SVSB staff and board agreement, Mr. Harrington directed Ms. Shubel to bring potential violations to the board. That's in the testimony from both Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Harrington, that he alone directed Ms. Shubel to bring forward the allegations that are now in the form of the notice for this board, this board to consider and to prosecute. And like I said in my opening remarks, during that period of time from October 1st to October 13th, there were 37 emails exchanged between the virtual board representatives and the auditor's office. Then October 13th, 2020, Mr. Harrington, without publicly disclosing his own conflict of ethic violations, votes to issue the notice of termination. His vote was the required third vote. The point of this proposition is that if you applied your conflict of interest principles to Mr. Harrington, if you'll flip to the next slide, please, Mr. Harrington would have been recused and would not have been allowed to vote, and there would not have been three votes for the notice to be issued. If you're looking at the current slide, that shows the language from the rule about direct financial conflict likely to have a direct and predictable effect on the material financial interest of the state officer. Knowing that Mr. Harrington's company had a contract with the same governing board for Dove Charter Schools, their brick and mortar school here in Oklahoma City, that also is the governing board for OITS, I would hope that you as members would believe that that is at least the same level of conflict of interest as Mr. Hemrick, Ms. Shepherd, that you voted to force recusal. Mr. Hemrick certainly got a couple hundred dollars to a campaign contribution and made some comments. So, we know that Mr. Harrington got a lot more money, $28,000, and if you flip to the next slide, talking about admitted bias against Epic, which is also in Rule 4.7, even in the news report from Channel 9, he's quoted here as saying that he prayed that they would find, discover a violation of law. Clearly, Mr. Harrington had a preconceived notion that Epic was guilty prior to the notice even being voted on by this board because this was during his interview with the state auditor and inspector's office, months before the notice was before this board. So, if you flip to the next slide, that's the last slide on this topic, and it shows that recusal should be applied equally. Direct financial conflict, check for Mr. Harrington. Admitted bias against Epic, check for Mr. Harrington. Forcibly recused or recusal at all, no. And that is the reason why we think that this board should dismiss the notice in total because if Mr. Harrington had recused or been forced to recuse, like Mr. Hemrick and like Ms. Shepherd, there would not have been three votes to start this process. Proposition number three, the next slide. Because the virtual board knew that Epic was sharing administrative resources and three other schools sponsored by this body also, the virtual board should dismiss the allegations in paragraphs 10 through 20 and 29 and 30 in the notice that deal with the concept of co-mingling, shared services, basically paragraphs 7.9 and 7.10 of the charter contract. Next slide. So, this one is a summary that shows the virtual board knew of shared administrative resources for five years. Seven times, Epic discussed or notified the virtual board about the administrative resource sharing. Zero times were concerns expressed to Epic. Three other entities, three other schools sponsored by this body do essentially the same thing of sharing resources as Epic does, and there's not a termination proceeding against any of those other schools. We just want fair and equal treatment. Next slide, please. This is the, um, the timeline that shows that the virtual board knew of shared administrative services for five years. November 19th, 2015, Epic disclosed the intercompany agreement with an entity called Community Strategies CA in a public meeting, public minutes, all of which have been provided to this body. April 19th, 2016, Epic actually improved that intercompany agreement after discussing it in the first meeting. August 1st, 2016, Epic provided agreements to the virtual staff and his council to consider. I sent those to Ms. Shubel, the Community Strategies California agreements and others. August 16th, that agreement to share services, Community Strategies California, was actually presented to this virtual board by the now prosecutor, your lawyer, who explained and answered questions from board members about how Epic was going to do shared services. Now, we're being terminated for what we brought to you and presented to you. Now, I understand none of you three gentlemen were on the board at that time, but it's in your minutes. August 16th, 2016, they're on your website, or you can get them from Ms. Wilkinson, Dr. Wilkinson. November 15th, 2016, SVSB staff attended Epic board meeting where agreement was discussed with CSCA. May 14th, 2017, Epic board contracts with Panola and Epic Blended using the same shared services cost structure in a public meeting. Minutes were sent to the, to your, to your staff. September 12th, 2017, the SVSB renews Epic's contracts, knowing full well the shared cost agreements. So, the contract you're now trying to terminate, we had all this paperwork in place, all in public meetings, fully transparent, presented to you by your lawyer. Then you renewed our contract and extended it. Now, October 13th, you're trying to terminate our contract for doing what we told you we were doing. Next slide, please. The next slide, just a blowout of the August 9th, 2016 meeting before this board, where Ms. Shubel presented, and this is the agenda item, the intercompany agreement between Community Strategies and Community Strategies CA. Community Strategies CA is the entity that we use for our shared services arrangement with other entities, including California, including Panola, including Pawhuska, and to some extent, including Blended. Next slide, please. Virtual board raised no concerns about resource sharing. Zero notice of any potential contract breaches. You can see the quoted language from Dr. Wilkinson's testimony. Zero concerns raised with any virtual school sharing resources. Zero times, Epic failed to refuse to provide information to the virtual board. Next slide, please. Three other schools, their logos are shown on the bottom of this page, have resource sharing agreements. You can see the checkbox here. Epic, other virtual scores, schools, similar admin resource sharing agreement, yes. Epic, other, three of these, three other virtual schools, management company, yes, yes. Terminate charter for resource sharing, Epic, yes. The three other schools, no. We want equal protection under the law and proper, consistent interpretation of our contracts. Just so you know, this board put in place standard form charter contracts. This is not a contract interpretation issue. The language in the contracts for these four schools that you sponsor is identical, identical. We're the only ones being terminated at Epic Charter Schools. Next slide, please. The SVSB staff, the, the board and the staff have provided proper oversight. That's the takeaway here. You've done your job, but you're trying to terminate us because there were lots of news stories about us or something, because an audit came out that you've read and heard from them, but you'd never heard from us. 36% error rate acknowledged by them, 30 times plus times. Staff and the SVSE board have asked documents from us. We've had numerous independent audits done. And I see I'm running out of time, so I'm going to go to the next slide. Proposition four, the learning fund. Until the litigation about the learning funds is complete, the virtual board should not act on the allegations, and they're still pending litigation. Those are allegations 25, 28, and 42. Even Ms. Wilkinson testified, "Would you agree that issues related to learning funds shouldn't be done before the, before the court rules?" And she said, "Yes. It's premature to take action on a learning fund while the litigation is pending because it goes to the fundamental nature of whether or not you're right or wrong. Are those public funds or private funds?" Again, last slide. Zero concerns during multiple site visits by SVSB staff concerning the learning fund. Zero concerns about learning fund during virtual board annual reports on Epic. In fact, it actually says that they reviewed it and didn't find any issues. Zero concerns about reviews of multiple independent audits of Epic about the learning fund. Again, the last slide, we just want continued, we just want equal treatment. We've shown that there are undisclosed conflicts... We've shown that there are undisclosed conflicts of Mr. Harrington that results in this whole case being dismissed. We've showed that the administrative resource sharing in those paragraphs should at a minimum be dismissed, because everybody else is doing it and nobody else is being terminated. And finally, that the learning fund allegation should be dismissed, because it's premature, because the pending litigation and your staff has reviewed them and found no errors or inconsistencies. Thank you very much. I don't know if I went on my time or not, did I go right on?
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll be here as long as you need me to be. I'm sorry, I'm getting parts knocked in.
That's okay.
Talking really fast, sorry.
We'll be reviewing things and discussing things a little bit later, but really appreciate your.
Thank you, and thank you for the chance to present to you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it was very parsimonious, and it helped to see it in graphic form versus the text that was presented, so thank you. Counsel Schubel.
Hello.
Where are you? And we'll do the same time limit and give you the same two-minute warning, Ms. Dikney, if you will, and so we turn it to you.
Okay. This case against Epic is governed by administrative law, which is also known as the APA, and agency rules. A motion for summary judgment is not a proper motion in administrative law, and this agency's do not, this agency's rules do not provide for such a motion, meaning that this board should not even consider it. A motion for summary judgment is a creature of civil procedure, not administrative law. Some agencies do adopt the Civil Code or the Evidence Code in their rules for use in their administrative hearings. However, the Virtual Charter School Board has not done so, and therefore, this motion for summary judgment should not even be considered. However, if the board should decide to consider Epic's motion regardless of the law, please consider these arguments in response. First, the biggest issue here, and why the motion must be denied outright, is the lack of undisputed facts. Epic makes no secret that they dispute all of the allegations in this case, as shown in their response, in their response to the notice of intent to terminate and in this motion for summary judgment. That in and of itself is why this motion must be denied. A motion for summary judgment is a motion during a lawsuit before a trial. One of the parties is telling the court that there's no disagreement on the facts, just the law. So if a court doesn't need to hear the evidence at a hearing, it just needs to apply the law to a set of undisputed facts. Case law tells us that if there are undisputed facts, like there are here, then motions for summary judgment have to be denied. Second, if Epic is going to be allowed to have its motion considered, it should be required to follow the law in drafting it. Epic's motion does not even follow the most basic requirement in the law. The Civil Code requires a motion for summary judgment to include a concise written statement of facts that the party filing the motion believes to be undisputed. Those undisputed facts must address all material facts at issue in the case. Case law states that if a motion does not do so, then the court must not grant the motion, because if there are disputed facts remaining, as there are here, that is the purpose of the trial. The law requires a written list of facts so that the opposing party has the opportunity to address each of those and controvert them individually if necessary. It is unfair for me to have to wade through the numerous pages of Epic's motion and trying to pick out the facts that they are claiming are undisputed. Another requirement of the law is that the evidence attached to the motion must prove those undisputed facts. None of the attachments to Epic's motion are relevant to whether Epic violated the terms of its contract, which is the whole point of this action. Not a single attachment addresses any of the allegations in the notice of intent to terminate. Instead, Epic spends numerous pages trying to shift focus to completely irrelevant issues. There are several, several examples from Epic's motion where I can show that the evidence presented by Epic is disputed and therefore does not support summary judgment. Epic's motion tries to make a big deal of the presentation I made to this board in 2016 about the Community Strategies contract. Epic tries to imply that this board's knowledge of that contract means they approved it. The presentation I made to the board about the existence of the contract was in 2016, and that's important. It was simply an informational presentation, because this board does not have the authority to accept or reject third-party contracts. At that time, in 2016, Epic's charter contract was the one that this board inherited from Graham Dustin, Epic's sponsor before this board even existed. That contract contained very few restrictions on how Epic could operate. It did not contain the terms of the current contract that are alleged violation in the notice of intent to terminate. This board chose to adopt a model contract after that in order to put restrictions on the school's operations and provide oversight. Epic's current contract, the one at issue in this matter, went into effect in July 2018, two years after that presentation that Epic is making such a big deal about. It is not up to me or this board to make sure that Epic's contract dealings from two years prior are in compliance with the terms of a new contract that they agreed to. That is up to their attorney and leadership to make sure that their actions and business dealings are in compliance with the terms of a contract that they agree to with this Another allegation made by Epic is that John Harrington wanted Epic to close so that he could benefit financially. There is not one piece of evidence attached to the original motion that proves this allegation. The Epic, excuse me, the evidence Epic uses to support this is one part of a sentence pulled from the interview notes of the state auditor's office. But if that entire portion of the interview was included, you would see that Epic is clearly making a disputed allegation, and it cannot be used to support summary judgment. Further, the allegation does not go to prove that Epic did not violate its charter contract, which is the whole point of this case. Epic tries to claim that the Funds for Learning contract, which is John Harrington's company, with other DOVE schools not sponsored by this board, shows a conflict. The Funds for Learning contract Epic attaches to his motion is not with OITS, the school sponsored by this board. Further, Harrington had disclosed his company's contract with the other DOVE schools to the Virtual Charter School Board Chairman at the time, Matt Hammrich, and counsel. Epic is simply attempting to paint him in a bad light. Epic's motion argues that allegations of the learning fund is off limits to this proceeding because of the district court case surrounding Epic's refusal to produce learning fund records. That proceeding is separate from this one and has no bearing on this agency's responsibility to ensure that the terms of its charter contract are followed. Epic's motion tries to shift blame to other state agencies, stating that these agencies have had access to Epic's financials and never told them what they were doing was wrong. This argument supports nothing. The allegations contained within the notice of intent to terminate come from the findings of the state auditor's investigative audit. Further, this argument by Epic clearly shows that they are disputing the facts, and if there is a dispute of fact, the motion for summary judgment has to be denied. Finally, after I submitted my response to the motion for summary judgment, Epic filed a reply brief with new evidence that was not attached to the original motion for summary judgment. It is not appropriate for this board to consider that evidence. If you plan to entertain it, this hearing should be rescheduled, who allow me time to review and present evidence in rebuttal. A motion for summary judgment is not the appropriate time to try and disprove the state's case. This board deserves the chance to hear the evidence presented by both sides at a hearing. When this board voted to proceed with the notice of intent to terminate, it voted that if the notice and the allegations were true, if they were proven true at the hearing, then they would constitute violations of the charter contract. That is the issue to be decided at hearing. You will have the opportunity to see and consider the evidence to support those allegations, and at that time, Epic will have its opportunity to present its case. As I said at the beginning, a motion for summary judgment is inappropriate in this administrative proceeding and must be denied simply for that reason. But should this board go ahead and consider it, you must remember what a motion for summary judgment is meant to do. Only apply the law to a set of undisputed facts. This motion for summary judgment does not show any undisputed facts, quite the opposite. Epic makes clear that the facts are in dispute, and therefore, this motion for summary judgment must be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We appreciate that. It's a lot of weighty information to try and navigate, and so before we move into or entertain a motion to, to go into executive session, I've been apprised by legal counsel, Dixon, that our items referenced as Item 2 in this Section 3 and 4, motion to quash plaintiff's subpoena, Duquesne Tecum served upon the Oklahoma State Auditor and Inspector. Item 3, motion, motion to quash plaintiff's subpoena, Duquesne Tecum served upon the Attorney General. And Item 4, motion to quash plaintiff's subpoena, Duquesne Tecum served upon the statewide Virtual Charter School Board. Merits some legal counsel feedback here. So if you will. Counselor Dixon?
Yes. I just wanted the board to know that I was contacted by Mr. Hickman, and he would like an opportunity to file written objections to these motions and ask that these motions not be ruled on today or discussed in executive session until he has had an opportunity to file a written objection to the motions to quash. So that would be my advice to the, to the board at, at the moment, is just to let you know that Mr. Hickman would like an opportunity to file an objection to these before they're discussed.
Counselor Hickman spoke to that in his opening comments. That aligns with what you're suggesting, and so as, as Chair, I would like to have the liberty to, to say that we'll establish that particular section so that we don't address that in our executive session, and we'll put that for further review in perhaps coming agendas.
Once all the parties, yeah.
Once all parties get a chance to, to review.
Yes.
Okay. Is that fair? Okay. Thank you, colleagues. So if we will at this point, I'd entertain a, a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. It's her second.
My second.
My second. Call for a vote, Ms. Dikney.
Mr. Beecham.
Yes.
Dr. Franklin.
Yes.
And Dr. Tatum.
Yes.
Colleagues, and we're going to, we've reserved another room here so that you all don't have to pack up and move your things. If you'd rather stay put, that's fine. Please maintain your social distancing. We're going to go to another room, have our executive session. Again, we're going to try as best we can to be, expedite these things to, to get to your agendas as well, so thank you. We'll be right back. Motion to re-enter our regular session.
So moved.
Moved in a second by.
Was, was that Dr. Tatum?
Yes. Call for the vote.
Dr. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Tatum.
Yes.
And Mr. Beecham.
Thank you, friends and colleagues that are listening in and, and waiting here for us. We've tried to be, to expedite things as, as well as we could, tried to be parsimonious and thoughtful about our executive session, and we have obviously an opportunity here to make some decisions. So in Item 7B, I would like to propose a, a motion to deny the summary judgment, as the board has not adopted the rules that allow the board to consider motions for summary judgment. Is there a, a second to that motion?
My second.
Ms. Dikney, if you'll call for a vote.
Uh, Dr. Tatum.
Yes.
Mr. Beecham.
Yes.
And Dr. Franklin.
Thank you, colleagues. We'll move to the next item, which is Item C, which is to discuss the possible action to reset the individual proceedings and the hearing dates regarding the termination of charter contract with Community Strategies, Inc., their governing board, and Epic one-to-one charter schools. Dr. Wilkinson, we had a lot of conversations. I know we've got a, a, a lot of families and a lot of folks that are waiting for us to make these decisions, and so I've looked at my calendar, I've tried to, to seek your calendar. I don't know what the calendar dates can be for this particular room and reservation, but perhaps what we're proposing is to move those proceedings on a two-day window on May 13th and May 14th, is what we are suggesting. Counselor Hickman, I know you have proposed other dates, and Ms. Counsel Schubel, I know you've proposed additional dates. The protracted nature of four days seems to be very onerous for all of our schedules. You heard my narrative at the beginning in regard to my family conditions. Four days makes it almost impossible for me to be here every single day for those meetings. I, I don't want to be disrespectful to the process. I know there's a ton of information here, but we are asking to move this to May 13th and 14th, particularly because we also feel like the, the earlier date allows families to get clarity about where we're going for next school year. An extended time, again, just protracts this so far. So what we're suggesting is to entertain a motion on May 13th and 14th, but legal counsel, I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to, to address the board on the 13th and 14th, are those dates that you could make work for your schedule.
Um, I have a meeting on 14th. Marie. I have a board meeting on 14th.
Okay. Is that a meeting that, it's a meeting that can't be rescheduled? If Counselor Hickman could?
Yes, it's already set in stone.
Counselor Hickman? Does, does the 13th and 14th, I mean, or if we were to look at a date range right there in that window, we also had another date.
Do we talk about the 12th?
We talked about the 12th as another opportunity, if we went with the 12th and 13th, could you make that happen? You could make that work, Counselor. Counselor Hickman?
I just, I want to be clear that I don't think two days will be sufficient time. I had proposed breaking the four days into two, two-day blocks. Ms. Schubel had indicated when I said that in an email that she would object to that, so I just want to preserve that for the record. If we schedule two days and we, and we don't get through all the witnesses and documents, I don't want to be rushed. I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to present the motion, but as you could probably tell, 10 minutes was not an adequate amount of time for me to really fully present that motion. I was rushing, and I don't want to be rushed at a trial that deals with the lives of 30-plus thousand children, teachers, and staff. I think this is more important than that and deserves the time that it takes, and I have respect and appreciate your volunteers and your situations, I do. But to do my job and ensure my clients' due process rights are afforded, I think we are entitled to present a defense, including calling the witnesses and presenting the exhibits we believe necessary to preserve those rights. And I will just tell you that my, my, you know, that she has three or four witnesses on her list, and I have six or eight on my list. My experience tells me that, you know, if they take at a minimum two or three hours each, I mean, you're talking over 16 hours of testimony alone, regard, you know, and not to mention the number of documents that may very well be admitted. There are 30,000 records I've gathered in this case, just to be clear. I've already taken two deposition's and am working to schedule four more. And so my client's investing significantly in this proceeding, because it means a great deal to our organization. And so if we, I would prefer if we're going to do, schedule two days, that we schedule two days in the May time and then schedule two days another time later to have them on the books, because I have a high degree of confidence that we will not get this done in two days.
Counselor Hickman, I, I saw your work in 10 minutes, what you did, and you're a very convincing and very thoughtful presenter. You're experienced legal counsel. There's no doubt in my mind that you do not have clarity of what you think it could be, but I also know oftentimes when you set six days, you'll take six. If you take 10, you'll take 10. If we set two, we'll begin to work toward that agenda, and if we could get to May 13th, or May 12th and 13th as agreed dates, we launch. And we, we know that this is critically important. Four days is a very difficult thing for our colleagues in regard to their schedules. We are being as thoughtful and as, and as committed to you and to your clients that you're serving, to the counsel that's working here. There is no one who's taking this very lightly. I know you don't mean that disrespectfully.
Oh, no, sir. I'm sorry.
We're right there with you. So if we could entertain a motion to schedule the 12th and 13th, I don't know if we need a motion, or we just set that date. Yes, ma'am? Yes, please.
I would echo that, and I would just reassert my objection, that if we're going to schedule two days, that that be the entirety of the hearing, because what I don't want to happen is to split this up where we have two days in May, and then we have to continue two days in June or July, and then, so I present in my case, and then we're allowing the other side to have two months to then rebut everything that I've done.
I wouldn't disagree with, with your comments.
And so that's why when, when Mr. Hickman and I discussed that probably four days would be sufficient, that I think it's fair for both sides, and the state deserves a fair hearing, just like Epic does.
Without question.
That we have a full four days to have this. So I, I echo him. I don't know that this could be done in two days, and so I would also object to having it that quickly if we are just going to schedule two days.
Colleagues. Colleagues, I don't want to have a debate here about whether or not one is more important than another, but I do know that we can get these two dates. I would challenge you, because this has been on the radar for a very, very long time, a very, very long time, for us to make that decision, challenge you as experienced attorneys and legal counsels to get to that two days, and we'll deal with that when we have to.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear that if we schedule this for two days and we don't get done, you know, my client will be prejudiced if we are not allowed to continue to present the witnesses that we have put on our preliminary witness list that we provided back when we were, when we, as counsel, agreed to exchange.
I would challenge it, yeah.
And I want to say that there's already 12 hours of deposition testimony in the books, four more to be done, which could be another 24 hours. I'm not saying it'll take that long to present them to this board because you're right. I mean, I can streamline that in the presentation.
Absolutely.
My biggest concern is, I go second. It's her responsibility to prosecute the case, and so he goes first. And so I have no control over how much time I get, I'm gonna have left, and if I walk in here, day two, at 10:00 AM, and I have one day, not even a full day, I mean...
Counselor, yeah.
I mean, we might as well just say, grant a termination and let us go on to the next appeal.
I appreciate your circumstances. I appreciate the conditions. I think we're gonna have to move forward. I think you can, I'm not gonna ask you to trust me, that's for your faith. I'm just gonna ask that you watch this process, and we will be as fair and impartial as can possibly be as a board to give you the due time, but that's gonna challenge you as legal counsel and experienced and seasoned veteran to bring the information in that way that represents your client very fairly, and we will give you that time. I think if we begin with the two days, we have to say, that's our parameter, we'll work toward that end, and that's what I'm proposing as board. I challenge you as a board to say, is that a motion that we could stand behind, and if so, then we could perhaps get a second, and then we can have some further questions about that.
I would move that we adopt the two days as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a second? Call for a vote, Ms. Dikney? Or is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Do we need to say the dates?
For May the 12th and 13th?
12th and 13th, yes, sorry.
So we can make our work.
Mr. Beecham.
Yes.
Dr. Franklin.
Yes.
And Dr. Tatum.
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Okay, colleagues, the time is now 4:30. I know many of you have schedules. We also have another chapter of work to do, and so I would leave that to our executive leader to walk us through all of these broad changes that we're making. I think public has had opportunity to review these, so if you don't mind, Dr. Wilkinson walking us through these.
Yes, these were presented to you previously. They are the rules that we were, that the board was to...